To have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dye, Mr. Marzullo, Mr. Shoner, Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Okay. Before we get started tonight, I would just like to take a moment of silence to honor the victims of today's unfortunate shooting in Texas. So if we could please just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay. Again, before we get started, I just want to, I'm sure everyone can determine it yourselves, but the reason why we're back up on the stage tonight is because the risers are here for the concert tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, correct?
Yes.
So after, for our next board meeting, we will be back down on the floor, so. Okay, so as we get started, we have some committee reports. Not a very busy month. I'm gonna try to go in order, but no promises. Oh, yes, I apologize. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. We don't have any for that tonight, so I closed that portion. Now we'll move on to committee reports. Skipped right over that. So on May 16th, I attended the South End FSA meeting. We got a sneak preview of the art show, which I'll talk about next. At the meeting, they talked about teacher appreciation and how amazing that was. Mrs. DiMaggio talked about the upcoming NJSLA and how they prepared our students. There was discussion about the 4th grade doing their move up to the Memorial Middle School, an opportunity to see the middle school and meet some teachers. Kindergarten screening was talked about, lots of end-of-the-year activities, and the South End Tricky Tray and the amazing job that the committee did, raising almost eighteen and a half thousand dollars to go towards the addition of the playground in memory of Nikki Storm. So that was really exciting. The next meeting, I anticipate, look forward to the swearing-in of the new officers, so look forward for that. I attended the art show on May 17th at South End. What an amazing job. It was so awesome to see that art show back up and running and seeing the students' artwork and them running around showing off at their parents. It was great. It was really an exciting time. On May 16th, I also, it was a very busy day for me. I also attended the evening Health and PE Standards Meeting for the community that Mr. Grosso did with Mr. Baer and Mrs. Barbosa. Oh, no, Mr. Pearson, I'm sorry. I knew one of you were there, but yes, you look very much alike. Mr. Pearson was there.
Mr. Gogarty, Ms. Ingles.
Yep, Ms. Ingles. It was really an informative evening. The community had an opportunity, asked a lot of questions, and I think it is the beginning of really bridging that gap and getting the information out and, you know, hopefully meeting the community's concerns. So, well done. You did a really nice job with that that night. On the May 18th, I attended the National Junior Honor Society at Memorial Middle School. That was really exciting to see this year's inductees. They did a really nice job. It's really impressive to see the parents and how much pride they have when they see that their children were being inducted in. That was a beautiful ceremony. On May 19th, I attended the academic awards here in the high school, and that was for 9th through 12th grade, and that was really an exciting evening. So many students receiving so many different awards. It's just a testament of their hard work and the parents' hard work and support. So that was really a great opportunity for me. Regarding facilities, so we are in constant communication, continuing to really pull apart the needs of the district. Mr. Grosso continues to work with the building administrators, specifically honing in on prioritizing our needs in all of the buildings, but primarily the overcrowding challenges that we have specifically in South End and North End. And we continue to work with the architect and the Home Facilities Committee on what is the best way to move forward so that we're fiscally responsible, but also the best interest of our children, our students. So I look forward to being able to bring that information to the public in the very near future. I think that was about it, what I did. Mrs. Miga.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, here and also watching at home. May was a busy month for all of us. On May 9th, I attended the APT meeting up here at the high school. Mr. Baer spoke about the new internship program, has between seven and eight interns, and they've started the program. I believe the start was right after the AP testing, right? Which was last week, I think, right? Peer leadership, they're looking to have a peer leadership field day as they try to build the program. E-sports is looking to become a high school sport. And the APT is wrapping up their dollar for scholars and preparing for scholarship night. And they provided treats for the staff for Teacher Appreciation Week. They're also looking ahead to next school year, which I know I've been stressing, they need volunteers. May 9th, I also attended a Black and Gold Club meeting. They too are wrapping up, and they too are in need of volunteers for the next school year. May 13th, I went to the final superintendent series of Mr. Grosso. May 12th, May 17th, I went to the North End and South End art shows. The students, staffs, and volunteers did an amazing job. Like you said, Dawn, it was really nice to see it back. May 16th, I too was here briefly for the new standards presentation. Then I went to the town council meeting, and then I went to the FSA meeting. Okay, I didn't sleep in May. The town clean sweep will be June 4th. I just picked a few little highlights. And the town fireworks, the 4th of July fireworks, will be June 30th with a rain date of July 1st, and they are having them back at Panther Park. On May 18th, the Middle School National Honors, Junior National Honor Society, there were seven returning students and 17 inductees, which I thought was quite impressive. Congratulations to everybody. On May 14th, we went to the Mental Health Wellness Festival. It was held in Verona in conjunction with Verona. Thank you to all that helped put this together. Thank you to all who attended and the vendors that made the day possible. It was a well-attended event. Mr. Marzullo was there with me. On May 19th was our final social-emotional learning meeting for the school year. The final presentations were on digital citizenship for the middle school and high school. That was, I believe, yesterday, or the parent one was yesterday at least. And tomorrow will be the final presentation at North End and South End by Jared Campbell.
And that is all. How did I do? The princess dinner, the princess...
Oh, that was for the Recreation Department, had an event with, what was it called? A princess party, I believe it was called, on Friday, and they brought in a horse and carriage.
It was very well-attended.
I don't know if you saw it on social media at all, but it was a very well-attended event, sold out in 22 minutes, I believe it was. So, that's it for me.
Mr. Marzullo.
Excellent. You two are certainly very busy, it sounds like, as was I. You just had a little bit more. I did have the opportunity to attend the first in-person North End FSA, which was great to see, you know, the attendance there. There was a great attendance. Ms. Dyer spoke and acknowledged a very important person in our district, Ms. Masato. I know Ms. Masato is very valued at North End. She was awarded the Governor's Teacher of the Year Award. And I just want to applaud Ms. Masato and Ms. Dyer for recognizing her dedication and effort and her loyalty to our students. We are very fortunate to have Ms. Masato in our district, and just congratulations to Ms. Masato. They had also the Mother's Day FSA plant sale was a great success. Plants were donated and will be planted also in the garden, which will be used as a learning space, and children will have the opportunity to upkeep the garden. We all know how kids love dirt and bugs and plants, so I'm sure they're going to have a great opportunity to keep that up to par. June 11th is the North End Jackals Night. Tickets are $12, and you can purchase those online also. Also, I'd like to announce that there will be the K-3 Foundations Program is being adopted, and that program focuses on literacy learning. So that's an excellent thing that we're bringing there, so kudos there. 4th grade promotion is going to be 10:30 a.m. on June 21st. The North End Clapout will be on the 22nd. And then the meeting, before it was adjourned, we had the new members sworn in, and they took their oath and are ready to get to work for the next school year. I also had the opportunity to attend the Memorial Middle School FSA. Just some quick notes there. The 7th grade Career Day is going to be June 10th. They have occupations that include business, science, legal professions that parents will be coming in and speaking to the 7th graders about, hopefully sparking some interest in wanting to pursue those occupations. Tomorrow, as Ms. Miga mentioned, I believe, is the Spring Concert. And also on June 1st, the Student vs. Faculty Challenge, which includes the students facing off against faculty in volleyball, basketball, and other activities. The Middle School Pool Party will be June 8th with a rain date of June 10th. And also, Mr. DeCort mentioned that they have replaced their photos, people taking their annual pictures with the Loris Photo Company, I believe that was. I also want to reiterate, I attended the curriculum, the Health PE Curriculum, in which Mr. Grosso spearheaded for us, and what a fantastic job Mr. Grosso did, putting that together along with Mr. Pearson, Ms. Ingles, and Mr. Gogarty. I feel, being in that profession, I feel they did an excellent job of bringing the attention and informing parents how the curriculum is written and implemented and how they will be addressing all the issues coming down the road from the state. So, Mr. Grosso, great job with your team on that. I also had the opportunity to attend the Yogi Berra rivalry game at Yogi Berra Stadium on the MSU campus between Verona and Cedar Grove, which was a great turnout and attendance. Unfortunately, we didn't win the game, but it was an exciting game to watch. They did make a fantastic comeback. The boys really gave a lot of heart there, so I was proud to see that. And I also had the opportunity to attend the Mental Health Wellness Fair in collaboration with Verona, and that was a well-planned event. They did a real good job, and look forward to working with them in the future and getting more of those going. So, like you said, busy month, year coming to an end, and there's a lot going on, so it was a lot of fun.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, so tonight we have a board presentation. We have the 2021 New Jersey Performance Report, and the Department of Curriculum and Instruction will be presenting. Yes? Our heads will be in the way.
Good evening, everyone. We are very happy to be here to share some information with you about some academic achievements, some things over the last couple of years, and also share with you some goals and initiatives moving forward. So each year, the New Jersey Department of Education releases an all-encompassing reflection of a variety of aspects of each school system. The data shared with this is really a snapshot known as the New Jersey School Performance Report, and it provides quantitative information, including demographics, academic achievement, course enrollment, graduation rates, and absenteeism. The reports are intended to be used as a tool to evaluate areas of both growth and development. This is just one of the multiple resources we are utilizing as a district to continue to move forward and support our students. So this is just a quick overview of our presentation. I will be talking a little bit about some highlighted portions of the report. We'll be discussing some of the ongoing initiatives that we are going, that were introduced already this year at both the elementary and the secondary levels, and that will continue into the next school year. In the area of academic achievement, the Performance Report essentially provides an overview of state testing, namely the NJSLA. Now, this report does not provide specific details, the same that you would get when the state testing is done. It doesn't break down student scores or standards. It simply categorizes an overall performance as either meeting or not meeting target proficiency as a district. It doesn't even break down into building or grade level. Something to note is that, you know, I'm gonna move forward here. Something to note is that this particular report card did not have any state testing scores from 1920 or 2021 because everything was waived due to remote learning and the pandemic. But, just to recap, the students this year were administered Start Strong in early fall. We shared those results in October. And combined with our in-house Lincoln assessments, we were able to make a plan, and it put us on track for how we would academically transition back to as close as a normal school year as we could get for instruction. The state introduced a new assessment this year, the Grade 11 NJGPA, and our students in grades 3 through 9 just completed the testing for the spring administration of NJSLA. Results will not be released until later this summer, but we will be back on this stage before we know it, sharing those results again in the fall. Mr. Pearson is going to be discussing some of the secondary results.
Hi, everyone. Most of the results that we're gonna look at center on the high school. And right now, we're looking at the 10th, 11th, the 10th, 12th grade PSAT, SAT, and ACT data. And the first slide we have here shows the participation rate. And as you can see, we only met state participation rate for 10th and 11th grade PSAT. But it's important to note that the 12th grade SAT participation was down in 2021. It was partially due to testing being free during the end of the 2019-2020 school year. Many students then chose to take the test online as 11th grader as opposed to doing it the year before, the year after as a 12th grader. This slide shows the SAT ACT data for performance. You can see that we did not make, I'm sorry, which one am I? Yes. We did not make state average in PSAT or SAT. The state did not provide any ACT performance results since so few students were tested. If you remember on the last slide, it said only 3.9% of our students took the ACT, which comes to about four students total. So that's why there's a little asterisk that goes all the way down. So let me move on to the AP College Board. Students in high school begin to demonstrate college readiness behaviors long before they actually graduate from high school. These include participating in advanced coursework such as Advanced Placement or the International Baccalaureate Course and Exam Dual Enrollment Courses, where high school students can enroll in college courses for credit. And it's important to note that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, College Board introduced changes for the spring 2021 administration of the AP exams. Students had a choice to take the assessment in person or to take a digital version online. And the College Board also offered three separate test sections for each subject to allow for social distancing. But if you look here, we were above. Data shows that we were above state average. I went way back. And now I'm gonna print it. Data shows that we were above state average for students enrolled in one or more AP courses, students taking one or more AP or IP exams, and students with one or more exam with a score of at least three on the AP exam. This shows our actual results. The performance for the AP Board Test shows you how many students were enrolled and how many students were tested. Notice that there are some classes where there's more students who took the test than there were who were enrolled in the class. I'll pick out AP Computer Science Principles. Other students in other STEM-related classes for Mr. Koster and Mr. Tedesco did take this test, I think four extra students then who signed up for Computer Principles. So it leaves us with a total of 168 AP tests taken for the 2020-2021 school year, and 100 with scores of three or higher. All right, we'll move back to Janine for this one.
The next couple of slides that you're going to see is a little bit of a sampling of a curriculum committee presentation and meeting that we were a part of with Ms. Dora and Mr. Marzullo last month. So while they heard some of this already, we're excited to share a little overview and a recap of some of the things that we've been working on this year. In terms of elementary K-5, the focus has really been on literacy. We have recognized a need for phonics. We are happy to share that we are adopting Foundations, which is a Wilson Learning Program, in K-3 in September 2023. Our grade-level teachers have already started training, and we're gathering materials before the end of the school year. The teachers will be receiving K-2 standard materials, classroom kits, transitional kits, as some of our students who, for example, going into grade three did not have the grade-two program as a foundation. But the teachers are going to be equipped with strategies and instructional tools to help them make that transition into the program. Hegarty is a program that is solely a phonemic awareness supplement. This is going to be shared with all of the teaching staff pre-K-4. They will all be trained on September 7th, and they will be given resources, including multi-tier strategies. Now, in addition to just the standard materials, the three and four teachers will be provided with a program called Bridging the Gap, which will help support the students who are in intervention. Throughout the course of the year, we had two consultants. Eric was our consultant for K-2 and Kirsten 3-5. They are from the Living Literacy Network, and they trained our staff on writing workshop, which is process writing, starting with personal narratives, informational writing. And there are a lot of positive comments that I could share, but I think one I want to share was from one of our veteran first-grade teachers. She said, "In all my years, I have never seen students so excited about writing." And that's what it's really about, and we expect even more wonderful experiences next year. The structure of the training has been a meet where they discuss strategies and resources, a lab site where the consultants modeled the mini lessons and the conferencing with the students, and then a debrief to talk about the next steps in moving ahead with the teachers. At the end of every unit, classes had publishing parties. Students celebrated their work, and it was just very, it was just very exciting. We are in the process of collecting some feedback so we can start planning for the next school year.
So moving forward in 6 to 12. One thing we're doing is a reevaluation of all the AP and honor-level course curriculums. But this also goes for just about, at this point, almost all curriculums that we have in the district. But we're putting an emphasis on the AP and honors, math and English curriculums in particular. We want to revise the curriculums, and we want to align them to better meet the standards and better meet the AP expectations. At the high school, we also added math and ELA labs. These are mandatory standard-based instruction for all 9th grade students. We have an English lab, we have an algebra lab, and we have a geometry lab. We have the creation, started this year, of the College and Career Readiness Course, which in itself covers SAT and ACT prep. And we have a zero-period SAT prep course, which has run for a few years at this point. Also, we have, and Mr. Baer has talked about this himself, the creation of a new level placement policy for high school students. It's a more inclusive procedure for students to reach AP-level courses, and we restructured the core sequencing charts for student placement. So let me give you an idea of that. There we go. Oh, now I wanna go back. I gotta go back. All right, let's go back. All right, so this is a comparison of pre-2021 school year, last school year, and next year, 2021 school year and beyond, in honors and AP-level placement procedures. So, pre-2022 school year, you get into honors or AP courses, you needed a grade of 90 or higher in the preceding course and teacher recommendation and a review of standardized test scores. In the 2021 school year and beyond, which we put into effect and schedule for next year, now students with a grade level of 90 or higher in the preceding courses are permitted to move up a level. Now, students with a grade of B, which is 82 to 89, with a teacher recommendation are permitted to move up a level as well. Students with a grade of B, 82 to 89, without a teacher recommendation must complete an application to move up a level. Students will initially be scheduled for their recommended level and must submit the application directly to their school counselor. Upon receipt of the application, the counselors will make desire change contingent upon the following: quarters three and four grades, recommend a teacher completed qualitative rubric, review of standardized test scores, a review of transcript, and administrative approval. And this is in place so we can give students opportunity, which is something I believe that we need to do a lot more, opportunity to succeed, opportunity for students not just based on grades and honors and AP courses. So this is an example of the core sequence chart. This is for social studies. And it's a lot of arrows, I understand, but I'll try to walk you through it as easily as I can. Using the pre-2021 school year, which is on the left, 9th grade students, after leaving the middle school, are placed based on their 8th grade social studies performance in Global Studies or Global Studies Honors. They had the opportunity then, after they completed those courses, either Global Studies or Global Studies Honors, to move into US History I or II cross-level and move up to US History I Honors, and then continue on the path until 12th grade. For 9th grade students who started in Global Studies Honors, they could then transition to US History I Honors. The student could then continue taking honors courses. The student could then continue taking honors courses, but the students were not given the opportunity with the old chart to take AP-level courses. Basically, before this year, students would only get the opportunity to participate in AP-level courses if they took Global Studies Honors in ninth grade and then transitioned to pre-AP U.S. History. That is until now. On the 2021 school year chart, now with the new placement procedures for the 2021 school year, which is on the right, you can see the ninth-grade students, either Academic Global Studies or Global Studies Honors, will not have the opportunity to take AP-level courses. For example, you could start in Academic Global Studies as a ninth grader, that would be at the top. And then, as a 10th grader, move into U.S. History I honors, which, you know, moving diagonally, and then, however, now students in U.S. History I honors will be given the opportunity to move into U.S. AP History as an 11th grader, and that's that big gigantic red arrow that's up there, which is different, which was not done in the past. Overall, the high school's new placement procedures, in conjunction with the course sequences, will work to provide our students more opportunities to participate in honors and AP-level classes, in courses such as Social Studies, Science, English, and Mathematics. And the idea again is to give all of our students the opportunity to move up levels and to succeed and to reach the level of academic achievement that they're capable of. And that was very important to both myself, Mr. Bayer, and really the entire administration.
In terms of some district-wide projects and goal-setting, this year we saw that we administered Forms A and B, and we are currently in the process of administering Form C using the Linkit data warehouse. Over the summer, one of our big projects and tasks will be to cross-reference and disaggregate the data from both the state testing and Form C and use it to inform decisions, professional development, programming, and district goals for the next school year. There are a few, although there was a lot of training that took place this year with Linkit, there are a few additional features that we are going to dive in a little bit more. The first I will actually mention is the intervention manager. Our principals, directors, interventionists, and INRS teams have been receiving ongoing training to use this as a tool to have more, a little bit more of an efficient and consistent process in terms of identifying students who need more support. And that goes hand-in-hand with tiers and assessment. In terms of professional development, we released a form to the staff. It was a needs assessment to invite the staff members from the entire district to reflect on any professional development, not only from this school year, but in the past, thinking about structures and models and consultants and sessions that really helped them to establish their own goals and elevate their, what their positions were. So we are working through that. We are going to be speaking to staff members through summatives about plans for next year, and we're looking for ways to help support them so that they can be in the best place possible for next school year. We would like to, on behalf of the Curriculum and Instruction Department, we would like to thank the staff members for their commitment and dedication to our students during a very challenging transitional year in education. We also know that Mr. Grossow has been sharing some information that the two of us were in new roles this year, and we thank the new people that we had an opportunity to work with, and we both learned a lot. I think I could speak for both of us.
Thank you totally.
Thank you.
Just asking a question. I don't remember. The SAT prep, that's that zero period, right? That's just SAT, that's not ACT, right?
No, just SAT, yes.
Just SAT. ACT, there is no prep.
No, not like a depend, like a total...
Not like a depending...
No, it's part of the College and Career Readiness Course, yes.
Right, okay. And then they, SATs are administered here once, right? Once a year here? The test is given here still?
I believe so. I know there's several...
On Saturdays.
Yes, yeah.
On one Saturday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay. And then, last, I'm just trying to make sure...
And this year, it's all in person, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then the ACT class test, that's not here, right?
We don't have the large population taking the ACT course. I mean, like I said before, it's only four students last year took that test.
And they took it online or is it taken in a...
I believe last year it was online, but when it comes down to it, there are colleges now that aren't, you know, they don't need test scores in order to be, you know, for that students to accept it in.
Sort of changing.
It's changing a bit. It's beginning to loosen, I think is a better way to look at it. It's not totally yet. There's still plenty of schools that look for SAT or ACT scores, but I do know it's a growing trend that they're moving away from that into other aspects of student performance.
Test options, like if...
Yes, for all.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Soon you're back. Well, girl. You're going to come. I don't have an easy SAT or ACT. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Come here. Thank you very much for that. It was very informative.
All right, so we're going to move on to superintendent update.
Yep. I'd like to just thank Barton Janine, and Barton Janine, you are 100% correct. You have definitely transitioned into these new positions, and I have to say publicly that I am so grateful for your hard work and your major efforts that you have made because this was a definite change, and you've embraced every minute of it, and I'm very grateful for your willingness to do that and what has come out of this. So thank you so much, and I appreciate that. We all do. All right, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly because a lot of what I have down here is you've all actually said too. So just to begin, I attended the 34th Annual Essex County Academic Awards Banquet on May 4th, and this is a wonderful opportunity for our two highest-achieving students academically to be honored at a dinner at Anini's in the Park with all of the other Essex County schools. And I just wanted to give a recognition to Vinay Patel, who's going to Rutgers, and Endri Zalari, who's going to Princeton. And we were very, very proud of when they were recognized at the awards banquet. And I sat with their parents, and it was just a really wonderful time, so it was a great opportunity. I also went to the North End Art Show on May 12th and also the South End Art Show on May 17th. I cannot express to you the immense amount of talent that is in the schools and how appreciative I am of the staff, the art staff, because what they exhibited was unbelievable. I actually posted some of the representations of the art on our Instagram account, which I do want to give a little plug to because we started off very slow and we were hovering around under 100 members, and now we're up to 171. So we're moving up there, so I'm very pleased. If you haven't done it, please sign on to our Instagram account because we do showcase a lot of our students and our staff's work. Ms. Miga actually shared about the superintendent series. This was the fourth and final one that took place on May 12th. We had a really great conversation, and the conversation really centered a lot around opportunity, especially looking into the American, the opportunity for students to indulge into the American Sign Language course. So one of our community members actually brought this up. They are involved with this over at Maclure State, and so, you know, I think this is, this could be a beginning of a really nice partnership that we already have with Maclure State, but we will definitely look into some opportunities for our students along that area. Also attended on May 14th, the Verona and Cedar Grove Mental Wellness Festival. It was wonderful on the Civic Center lawn, a lot of vendors, a lot of great food, fun, yoga, musicians. Next year, it will be our turn to, to, my mind went blank.
Host.
Host, thank you. Thank you. It'll be our turn to host it, and it's something that, you know, is very exciting, and we are very grateful to partner with Verona on this. We, you know, thank you to everybody who spoke about the New Jersey Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Standards. We, on May 16th, we did that meeting on the morning at the library at 10:00 a.m., and then we did it also here in this auditorium at 6:00 p.m. And I will tell you, that particular 6:00 p.m. was a brutal downpour. And I was very impressed with the amount of people that actually came out during that time because the skies opened, and it was a great conversation, some really great questions, and it was a great opportunity just to share where we are and for you, you know, as a community, to share your perspective on this. So that was a wonderful, wonderful workshop session. We also, I also attended the National Junior Honor Society on May 18th, and it was wonderful to see the students celebrated for their achievements. Also on May 19th, the Cedar Grove High School Academic Awards, which was really an exciting time, and the Digital Citizenship Series. So Mr. Ed De La Fuente, he was a retired Milburn Police Officer who is now a fifth-grade elementary school teacher. He presented to the middle school and the high school last Friday, which I have to share, the students were completely engaged, and it was very, very exciting. And last night, we had a session for our families and our community members, though there was a big technical difficulty with that. So what we did was we were able to push that out, a recorded series of this, onto our mental health page, as well as it was emailed to all families. So if you didn't get a chance to log in for some strange reason, we don't understand why, we did make that presentation available online, and it's in your inbox, in your email. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. All right, so let's get down to business here. Under minutes, can I have a motion for V-1 through V-5, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Dora.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B-6?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Dora.
Yes. All right. Under business, a little bit bigger here, can I have a motion for B-7 through B-19, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Sorry, you were so close.
That's good.
Um, under B, B-8, I'd like to say thank you very much to the North End FSA for your contribution to the beautification project. Under B-14, I would extend my thanks to the Black and Gold Club for the purchase of the girls' tennis banner to be placed in the high school. This banner represents the tennis team in the fall that won the SEC Colonial Division Championship, so they get a banner up there. I don't think there's ever been a banner in the high school for them. And B-19, I would like to extend a thank you for a very large donation from the O'Toole Scrivo LLC for scholarships.
For graduating seniors.
For graduating seniors, yeah, it'll be five scholarships, $25,000. So thank you very much to everybody. Very appreciative. That's all my discussion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Dora.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S-1 through S-30, please?
Uh, yeah, motion, yes, so moved. What am I doing?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry. The, Mr. Grossow or Mr. Gavina, I'm not sure. So under S-23, the overnight trip to Hershey Park, I just want to make sure everything is good, set. I know I asked, COVID restrictions, yes, no, everything's good? Chaperones are good? If a chaperone goes down, we got a replacement?
Yep, we're okay. We had the presentation last meeting, so this would be the approval for that overnight trip. So everything is, right now, is in appropriate order. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Dora.
Yes. Okay, under contracts, can I have a motion for S-31 and S-32, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Dora.
Yes. Okay, at this point, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. The Board of Ed recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and/or group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length, please, and keep each statement to the three limit, three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Please direct all your statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy or is abusive, obscene, or may be defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. So with that, we have our signup list here. First, we have Bonnie Fiala.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Fiala, 16 Pine Drive. I have three children in the Cedar Grove School District. My oldest, Alexa, is in fifth grade at Memorial Middle School. My daughter Brianna is in third grade, and my son Marco is in kindergarten at North End. All three of my children have been blessed with wonderful teachers over the years, and I am truly grateful for that. I'm also the corresponding secretary for the North End FSA, and I have been teaching first grade for 20 years. I am here to speak tonight regarding a board-approved decision that was made back on March 16th, 2021, to dissolve all school library media specialist positions in the district. I feel very passionate about having a media specialist in every school. It is appalling that at the present time, no Cedar Grove schools have a media specialist. I know if every, I don't know if everyone realizes, but the role of the school media specialist is not only to simply check out books. The school library is a learning center linked to classroom instruction. The school library supports the school's mission to produce literate and informed learners who can thrive in a digital, knowledge-based world. The school library is a 21st-century classroom that provides an understanding of the information and technology students will confront as digital citizens. The school librarian is a co-teacher who undertakes an active role in engaging in shared instruction. I understand our board voted to dissolve all library services, but did our community have a say in this decision? I'm also aware the Cedar Grove Board of Education received a letter from the New Jersey Association of School Librarians on April 5th, 2021, stating that our district is no longer compliant with the state since we've dissolved all library media specialists. No one has responded to this letter. I spoke to a representative from the New Jersey Association of School Librarians to find out more information. In the interest of time, I just want to briefly mention two areas of how we are no longer First, according to the New Jersey Administrative Code, it specifically states that all school districts shall provide library media services that are connected to classroom studies in each school building, including access to computers, district-approved instructional software, appropriate books, and supplemental... software, appropriate books, and supplemental materials, and to conduct research. Each school district shall provide these library media services under the direction of a certified school library media specialist. And second, according to annual CUSAC review, one of the governing indicators, number 14, states that schools must be compliant with having library services. Specifically, the district board of education ensures that all students have access to library media services that are connected to classroom studies in each school building, including access to computers, school district-approved instructional software, appropriate books, and supplemental materials. The elementary years are the foundational years for our children. One of the main reasons my family moved to Cedar Grove before my oldest started kindergarten was the reputation of our schools. We have fantastic teachers, administrators, and support staff. Please stop cutting vital programs. As a taxpayer, I am, as well as so many parents from North End, upset that the board voted to remove the school library media specialist position from our schools, thereby denying access to a resource-rich school library program. It is the board's job to ensure our schools are compliant and adhering to all the standards. I thank you for listening to my concerns, and I do hope you consider reinstating the library media specialist positions in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiala. And I hear what you're saying, and it certainly will be a discussion that will take place.
And, and I do know, when the email went out, the board was different, so if you want me to forward anything to you, I would be more than happy to do that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Affy Lampley? Good evening.
I'm Affy Lampley. I live at 40 Pine Drive. I just want to make a quick statement tonight. I'm here tonight because I'm really concerned about race relations in town. I've spoken about this before. I really haven't gotten an answer back from the board. About two weeks ago, an African-American student at the high school was told to go back to picking cotton. Then today, we get an email from the high school principal discussing that there was a racial slur towards the black community on one of the student desks. In February of this year, a parent stood up and used a full N-word. What's going on? What are we doing? As a mom of two black boys, this is no longer becoming a safe place for them to go to school. What are we doing? This is a major issue. I have a lot of, I don't know, frustration with it. I feel like these issues are being swept under the rug because we don't want to talk about it. They're hard, difficult topics to discuss, but they need to be addressed. Look at what's going on. Last week, what happened in Buffalo, that was a child. He was 18 years old. He had enough hate to drive across New York State and go and murder black people in a supermarket. Look at what happened in Texas. These things need to be addressed. Why are kids so angry? Why do they feel that they need to use racial slurs? I mean, something needs to be done. I'm just begging that you guys don't continue to sweep this under the rug. EDAC has met twice this year. Twice.
So, Mrs. Lampley, I can assure you that we, it is not being swept under the rug, and as a matter of fact, things are being done. Conversations are happening, programs are being put into place, the research is being done. It is not being swept under the rug.
When are we going to find out? Because I feel like I don't know that. What's being, what's happening? Who's in charge of it? What are the steps they're gonna be taking? I'm just concerned. I have a first grader in North End, and I have a middle schooler.
I hear what you're saying, yes.
And so I need to know what's happening, because I'm concerned. These are not isolated incidences.
Yeah, I'll definitely address a lot of your issues. This is very concerning to me, as the leader of the district. I know with our administrative team as well, we've discussed this, and as a governing body, this is, if we look at the statistics over the course of this past year, primarily we look at these biased issues that have gone on at the high school level. So one of, one of the steps we've taken is, we've discussed with the Cedar Grove Police Department, and partnering with our local PD for some collaborative partnerships amongst our community to start to address these issues. But I also reached out to the Essex County Prosecutor's Office and the Juvenile Division, and we are looking to partner with them for some assistance, as well as intervention, interventions that can help to inform students as to when you utilize language, visuals, pictures, writings that are biased, your consequences for your actions, and how it paints a, a very negative picture for the community, and an unwelcoming picture for the community. So we are, we have taken those steps, and one of the things that we are looking to do is, before the end of this school year, especially at the high school level, is to address this with our student body, with professionals that work with this at the county level, and, and with law enforcement. It is very important to us, as leaders of the district, for our children to understand that when you decide to make a decision to use defamatory language, writings, et cetera, those are crimes, and there are consequences for those actions. And there are long-lasting consequences that not, that are not just school-based. So these are some of the steps that we've taken so far, but as we go and move into the summer, and we look in planning for our 22-23 school year, we look at bringing, we look at, to bringing programming to our students, starting at this level here, at the high school level, and bringing it down to some of our most vulnerable students that need assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, we have two coming up, June 15th and July 19th. Times are the same, 6:30 executive, 7:30 for the regular meeting, again, June 15th and July 19th. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. Meeting adjourned.
You need a motion.
Oh, motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Roll call? Tried to do roll call.
All in favor?
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Meeting adjourned.